To the regular city council meeting of January 7th, it is 7:30. We are going to initiate the meeting with the oath of office. So would Greg Zilka, Brad Hurcock, Leif Hansen, Wayne Liljergren, and James Storey please rise at your seats? And please repeat after me. Aye, your name.
Aye, Greg Zilka.
Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state and to discharge faithfully the duties devolving upon me as council member of the City of Little Falls.
And of this state and to discharge faithfully the duties devolving upon me as council member of the City of Little Falls.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you. You may be seated. All right, well, stay standing because we're going to rise and do a pledge because we have...
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All individuals are asked to silence, either silence or turn off their cell phones, pagers, or other electronic devices that they may not disrupt the meeting. We do have a quorum. We will initiate the meeting with the council reorganization. At this point, we need to elect a council president. Are there any nominations for council president?
I'd like to make a motion to have Brad Hurcock as council president.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion, second to nominate Brad Hurcock as council president. Is there any other nominations for council president? Any other nominations for council president? Third and final call, any other nominations for council president? Seeing no other nominations for council president, move to vote. All those in favor of Brad Hurcock as council president, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Brad, congratulations.
You didn't even get moved in. Thank you.
All right, we'll do some musical chairs here and then actually, Brad, you get to turn it over and start running the meeting.
John, I asked Leif if he'd like a picture with his family since they're here for the swearing in and we have no indication, so.
Okay.
I don't know if you want to do it after the vice president. Well, I guess Brad can make that call. Yeah. Do you want these?
Yep, we'll move those back in. Let's do the nameplates and I think then we can do the photos. And there, this is the seating arrangement that you had...
I think I brought them. First, anyone to get this picture taken. Your first big decision. We'll do this.
It's almost like Wheel of Fortune.
Thank you. Do you have any nominations for council vice president?
I'd like to nominate Jerry Canofla.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? All in favor? Motion by council member Goschek, second by council member Liljergren for Jerry as council vice president. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Congratulations, Jerry.
Thank you, Brad.
Would you like to take a picture?
Sure. Or would you rather not?
Yeah, they do.
Nay.
On a three to one vote. Approval of the agenda. Approve the agenda as posted in accordance with open meeting law and herein place all agenda items on the table for discussion. What's the wish of the council?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second. Motion by council member Lundberg, second by Mayor Zilka. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes. Approval of the minutes. Special work session, meeting of December 17th, 2018, and the regular meeting of December 17th, 2018, approve. What's the wish of the council?
Motion to move.
Second.
Motion by council member Storey, second by council member Canofla. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes. Approval of the bills. Checks 99878 through 99934 totaling $305,021.3 approved. What's the wish of the council?
Motion to move.
Second.
Motion by council member Storey, second by council member Canofla. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes. Approval of the bills. Checks 99878 through 99934 totaling $305,021.3 approved. What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Second.
Motion by council member Goschek, second by council member Storey. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We have no awards, donations, presentations, or proclamations. Next is the consent agenda. Building report, November 2018, receive. Housing and redevelopment authority minutes, November, I think that's supposed to be November 2018, receive. Out-of-state travel, city administrator, National League of Cities, and International City/County Management Association conferences authorize. Police report, November 2018, receive. Recycling report, September 2018, receive. And rescheduled regular city council meetings for 2019, affirm. What's the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive, authorize, and affirm the items from the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by council member Hansen, second by council member Lundberg. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes. Public hearings and lettings. Audio and large format display equipment, AVI systems, for the council chambers. John.
Thank you, council president. In our budget, we did approve upgrading the equipment for the council chambers. Our cameras are analog and can only support a low-def definition signal. Throughout our public access channel network, we've upgraded everything in our system to produce high-def quality images. This is the only place that we have in that system that's falling short of that. So we did, worked with AVI systems, they're out of the cities, to come up with a proposal to upgrade the cameras and other equipment associated with the display in the room, as well as add a large format display monitor that we'll have installed in here as well. So we'll have no more projection screen and dropdown. It will be basically an 82-inch high-def TV that will be used for that display, which will work great as well because that'll be synced into the signal. So rather than having to have a camera pointed on the screen to get the signal, it'll be just directly that the signal that's going to the TV can be streamed back into the council or into the video feed that goes out and gets put onto the public access channel. With this, the system will be much more streamlined for us. I know we had, in times where Mark from Great River Television can't be here, you know, we have to turn the system on and make sure that everything gets downloaded and copied and we're not always sure that that gets done right. So this will be really a much simpler process. To my understanding, we basically push the button, the meeting's ready to go, to be recorded. We can also livestream that feed onto a YouTube channel if we so choose. The meetings will then, it will be recorded into a hard drive instead of into a DVD disc so we don't have to worry about transferring things back and forth. A much simpler system for us to use that'll be displayed in high definition. So that will kind of solve the link in the chain for bringing up our quality of signal. This was a big, actually, recent talking point in our discussion with Charter and the franchise agreement. The funds that will be used to pay for this project will come out of our cable fund, being reimbursed out of the PEG dollars, the Public Educational Government fee. It's a 50 cent per user fee per month that we collect that goes to pay for capital improvements like this. So the funds that we've built up in the cable TV fund right now are going to be used to pay for it and then they'll be reimbursed over time by that fee. There were talks in the franchise negotiations about eliminating that fee and we've fought to keep it in and reserve the right to increase it. So the proposal that we have on the table with them is that we will be able to increase it, but five years after the approval of the franchise agreement. So the franchise agreement is very close to finish. I'm just waiting for a consult from our attorney on that franchise agreement. Likely by the next meeting, we will have something on the table for the council to be able to make a decision on. So that will be going out very, very soon. So with that, I did want to mention, I need a correction in my memo. Post, when we're referring to the contract or for the prices of the equipment, we actually, we're in discussion that we can utilize a shared cooperative purchasing contract that AVI has with the University of Minnesota because that also partners, just like we do with Sourcewall, with all their local governments. And between the time, our original quote in this realized that not all the items that were quoted were on that contract, so they went back through and redid that. So we actually found about $3,000 more of cost savings with the original tax exemption too is another three grand. So from what we were talking about last fall in budget time to today, we actually found quite a bit of cost savings relative to the project between those things. So it really does come back down. It is very, I would say, still a $50,000 project. It's still very expensive work, but this is a company that will give us all the equipment and installation and instruction so that we will have a much better system when it's
What's the wish of the council?
I move to a word.
Motion by council member Lundberg, second by Mayor Zilka. Any discussion?
$50,000, you said?
Yes.
Seems high, doesn't it?
The cameras themselves are about $4,000 apiece. I mean, there's a lot of other pieces. Total equipment cost is around $30,000, installation's about 18. Those are kind of some of the big pieces and then there's some other...
So you just term it integration and you can charge a lot more, is what I'm reading into this.
Yeah. I, for one, wouldn't want to be in charge of trying to install that equipment and get it working. I think that's, I'll leave that to a team that really knows what they're doing.
Did we have at least any price verification comparison? I mean, heck, did we have Mark look at it?
Mark, we had this conversation about this and there was, he indicated that he didn't want to do any of the camera installs.
No, I'm not talking about that, but I mean, is he... Mark, are you familiar with this stuff? I mean, is...
Uh, yes.
Does this price seem reasonable with your knowledge or are we...
Yeah. My personal cams are $4,000 apiece, so that's an acceptable price for these types of cameras. And we've already got the monitor and I think $10,000, $20,000.
Yeah, there are two items on there that we can reuse. The camera controls themselves and the monitor, display monitor for the cameras are, we can use with the existing system because they are high definition and that'll save us $20,000 between those two items. Those are really the highest ticket expense if we were going to completely upgrade everything. So the fact that we can save those and reuse them was really beneficial.
And they'll still be good for a while?
And they will be good for a while, yes. And we did ask, make sure that if ever we did move out of this building to a different facility, those cameras could be, that system could be ported. Just basically have to leave the wiring behind and rewire it, but...
And John, am I correct in understanding that the PEG fees that people who have cable pay on their bill will go to pay for this?
Yes, yep. So that 50 cents per month that you see on your spectrum bill for cable, that's what it's paying for.
How much do we have in that fund so far?
There's over $65,000 in the cable fund, real.
So what's there, we'll cover it for now. We'll just replenish that.
Will we be able to recover any of that cost with this other stuff? What's going to happen with the stuff that's in here now?
The existing equipment will probably be listed as surplus items and we do auction those, the pieces that are of value, we do auction them off. The cameras themselves being analog, I would assume, are not going to yield a whole lot of value. Some of the audio equipment might, that's being upgraded as well, so that might have some purpose for people.
Projector.
The projector, we can find a use. We have other departments that have needs for some of that stuff. The screen certainly could be easily reused.
Not hearing any other discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes. Hold business, ordinance number 13, seventh series, sale of property Adam and Roxanne Jalinski, introduced 12/17/18. When we introduced it before?
No, motion...
We just... Motion again?
Discussion.
What's the wish of the council?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Zilka, second by council member Liljergren. Any discussion?
Mr. President, once again, I'll just state my opposition to the sale. I think the price is too cheap for the amount of land.
Anyone else? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Nope, sorry.
Ordinance called a rule.
Sorry.
Resolutions, we do.
Sorry, yep.
Canofla?
Yes.
Liljergren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Storey?
Ah, yes.
Hansen?
No.
Goschek?
Yes.
Carries?
Sorry about that. New business, extension of professional service agreement, Hometown Planning LLC, planning and zoning administration services, approve, authorize.
Council president, we have, with Ben Olson of Hometown Planning, we have a contract with him. It technically expired on December 31st. This is an extension to that existing contract. We are in discussions with him and another vendor about potential, our planning and zoning services, and we're finalizing those details for the long-term, on a long-term contract. So at this point, we did want to have an extension until we could finish that discussion to present for that new decision, so.
That's why this was month by month?
Yes.
What's the wish of the council?
I make a motion to approve the extension agreement.
Motion by council member Goschek, second by council member Canofla. Any discussion?
And this is for a month at a time?
Yes.
And he's getting a $275 a month raise effective February 28th. Contractors should be paid a flat monthly rate of $3,725 up through February 28th. After that, contractors should be paid a flat monthly rate of $2,800.
Yeah, his contract proposal for '19 was with an increase and I think that was the amount. So he's actually extending his 2018 price through, for a few more months. So if we had, in the past, we had, you know, his price has gone up from year to year. So this would, the intent is that by end of February, we would have a decision made. So like, that's, I think, what his expectation is on that increase.
And you said there's another vendor applying for this?
Yes.
Okay. That's good. I mean, it's good to have competition out there.
Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes. Patrol officer points designation, John.
During some of the union discussions, it was brought up to, of an interest to look at the points awarded to our positions that we have within the city. As part of that, we did, initially, the points have been, were all readjusted and reassigned to the current pay schedule back in 2015 when we did a pay equity study with Springstead. So that was, you know, being three years ago, I felt it was important that we do look at and ensuring that these points, the points that we are applying to positions are indeed accurate. Things can change over that period of time. So I did assess all positions that were within grades five through eight, and then next year we'll do one through four, and then after that, we'll do nine through 12 and the like. So we'll be looking at various positions on a rotational basis and evaluating them for all the points. Of that analysis for all the positions, the only one that I felt, that saw an increase in points was within the patrol officer position. It did move from, in that analysis, it did move from 283 points to 310 points. The impact of that is a grade change from seven to eight. So financially, the impact isn't, within the discussions with the union about potentially if this were to go through, the move wouldn't be, wouldn't fall within the contract moves for promotion. That was kind of one of the very important parts of this discussion because in contract, when an employee is in one position and gets promoted to a different position, they wanted to make sure that they're moving along that pay schedule and receiving a pay increase at some point. With this, this isn't a promotion. It's existing position, it's just now has more points than it previously did. So what we do is we are moving the position into the point where it's the most closely assigned pay rate as what they currently are. So what happens is effectively is they move to a position that actually is three cents less, but because it's only three cents, we actually just leave them at their existing pay and then once their step increase hits, then they get the next step increase. So within this position group, the patrol officers, most of them are at the top end of grade seven. So this moves them into grade eight where they do, would then have two steps more that they could earn over time. So this was part of the, in the union discussions, it was, because it was, we're really, we're looking at it, it was factored into the budget discussion for the year. So effectively, everything, if approved, is set to go. It doesn't impact our budget for this year. It has been made aware by the unions, they're, they've accepted the way the shift would work and they're happy about the change.
What's the wish of the council?
Motion to move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion by council member Storey, second by council member Lundberg. Any discussion?
What changed in a patrol officer's duties that their points went up?
The training and experience, the experience actually was at zero, sorry, not training, but experience was pointed at zero. And functionally, we've never hired a patrol officer with zero experience. All of our patrol officers that are currently with us, or most recently with us, have come from our part-time officers. And it has been a discussion about our hiring policy of where those officers are going to come from and what we do expect. So that was, making that simple change accounted for most of the points.
Okay, thank you.
John, aren't they also required a certificate or something?
They do have, yeah, the training requirements are post-certified, which is, you know, equivalent to about a associate's degree, you know, to your training process and a lot of other positions when you have, you can yield educational experience for work experience. So in my mind, that was, it truly what made it the most fair and justifiable to assign something less than none.
I would agree. I was just asking the question, that makes a lot of sense. It'd be pretty tough to take if you're at the top step and then, if I don't understand how the points work, I doubt most of the patrol officers have a clue at how that's rated as well.
It was also very glaring when I looked at all the positions, grade five through eight, and every single one of those other positions had something in there for experience in giving some points. So this, you know, in grades five through eight, there wasn't any other position that had zero, had no requirement of experience. So at that level, within our organization, there, I mean, I really didn't think it was justifiable that there should be zero, so.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Payroll administrator, benefits coordinator, job description, points, and posting, approve/authorize. John?
Again, another position that we're looking at, talked about very extensively in the budgeting process. Both Lori and I have had long conversations about what this position will be. It's been also discussed about the needs amongst our administration team, what we really are looking for. Ultimately, we settled on a payroll administrator, benefits coordinator, the primary job duties are going to be handling a lot of the payroll, employee administration, the paperwork filing, you know, details regarding that, how we handle the employees with secondary or other duties to support the administration staff. So this is going to be really a direct support to Lori to offset a lot of that, those job functions and duties onto a new person to handle that. Another aspect I think will be very beneficial for us as we are moving to a new payroll administration software, time management software this year, and having somebody else to learn that and kind of be the master for that will be very beneficial. As we scored it, you know, really looking at some of the functions, we're, did see it score above, we're looking at functions above and beyond just our entry-level admin staff with the utility billing clerk and accounting tech. So there were some higher scores that came out of that, but below, ultimately below the city clerk position, so.
What's the wish of the council?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Zilka, second by council member Goschek. Any discussion?
I think this is really, really well thought out. I like the overall, all of it. However, I have, I found several grammatical and typographical errors that I could send to you to get the language correct on there.
Yes.
Thank you. Do you want me to just put that on the server? Save it to the server?
Why don't you send me an email?
We're just talking about the last sentence in the qualification. It's not quite sure if it flows quite...
Oh.
Yeah, there...
I've got a few.
I may have been involved in a lot of that.
In substance, it's really good.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I was really looking more for key, you know, key functions and I'm happy to accept corrections on...
Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes. Resolution 2019-01, designate official newspaper. What's the wish of the council?
So moved.
Motion by council member Hansen, second by council member Canofla. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to bring up, and I'm not suggesting that we don't use the record, but is there a, right, we're not required to have all of our postings in a paper, correct? We could designate.
We are. We are, we are, yes. Statutorily, the state requires us to...
I thought, when I... If I thought, when I went to the-
There-
Thing years ago, when first elected for the, the conference for newly elected officials, I thought, you just have to designate a public posting spot, and it could be on the front door of City Hall.
The state was trying to do something with that, weren't they? Two years ago, I think, or three? I thought they were trying to pass it.
They, they did. That was part of the, the posting of ordinances, any proposed ordinance changes, that you, they weren't, you didn't have to, have to publish them. They just had to be posted either on your, on your website or in a public, public location. So that wasn't an added, you know, publication. But when we pass an ordinance by statute, I think even our charter, we have to publish it in the paper.
Right. There are certain public notices, like when we have public hearings and, and publish ordinances and certain-
Okay. I was just trying to look up for a backup plan. I know, because over the last couple of years, we've had a couple of public notices that we had to postpone because we didn't get them in, in time.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Resolution?
Call a roll.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starlee?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution 2019-02, designate official depositories. Adopt. What's the wish of the council?
Move to adopt. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Knopfler, second by Councilmember Hanson. Any discussion? Resolution, call of roll, please.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starlee?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution 2019-03, establish fee schedule 2019. Adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Motion by Councilmember Starlee, second by Mayor Zilka. Any discussion?
Council President, I would, I do want to note, the, there is red lines to hear of what the, the changes are. We have the hanger lease, and then the, we did, I brought this at the last, believe the last council meeting. We're looking at the, the building permit fee related to the valuation. Did comparisons with, with surrounding communities on what their evaluations were, found that we were significantly lower than them, especially when it came to the higher-end valuations. So the way the calculations work is you start with a base, and then you, you have for each valuation tier, a, a rate per, per hundred or per thousand. And where, what, what caused us to fall so far behind was that our, our rates, those rates per hundred and per thousand were, were below what our neighboring communities were. So this is, I believe, as discussed or asked, this is a fee that we do share with the, the building inspector. There, this portion of the fee is split 70% to the building inspector, 30% to the city. So it is, it does come back, come back to the city. We left the base charges the same, which is a bulk of our, our permits. I would say majority or most of the permits are, fall within that, that first $45 permit, but the rest of them are, are in increase.
I have to look quick. There was one I saw that it looked like we totally eliminated.
Oh, that was, I think, because, was that for the cell towers on poles?
Oh, solicitation.
Solicitation.
Right. We are not allowed to license for solicitation any longer.
Yes. Yeah, that was an, another question that came out, or, or was last year. We had a person come in to do door-to-door sales, and they, they brought forward to our attention, and with the consultation from our attorneys, we weren't allowed to collect a license fee for that.
Do they still have to be licensed or permitted to do it? Or can just anybody come in and do whatever they want?
If I recall correctly, there is no license required.
Our approval.
Our approval. They can just, yeah.
Well, I think knocking on somebody's door, trying to sell something is paramount to free speech. I mean-
Out of my house.
No, thank you.
Resolution, call a roll, please.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starlee?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution 2019-05, execution of agreement. Minnesota Department of Transportation, trunk highway 27 improvements. Greg?
Yeah. The agreement they have in front of you is the agreement with MINDOT to do the construction along trunk highway 27 for our utility work, as well as the, our cost participation on the, the street work for 27. The dollar amount that they're projecting our cost would be is $2,265, $200, $2,265,000, $239 and 2 cents. And so, once we get the bids, that number will be, will be updated. But we do need to approve this, this resolution in order to partner with them to do that project.
What's the wish of the council?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Liljegren, second by Councilmember Goschek. Any discussion?
What's their portion?
A lot more. I think the, the total project cost was about $6.5 to $7 million. So they pick up the remainder of it.
Are there any parts, usually when we have a project, you, things that you do that help to lower our cost?
There are.
Are they letting you do that?
Yep. And so if you look through the fine print in there, there's basically the engineering, the construction administration of it, as well as the staking. So we do a lot of that for our portion of it, so we don't have to pay MINDOT to do that, that component of it. On the state side of the 27, they obviously have the inspection that we'll, we'll have to pay. But there is, they did reduce that on the side streets so that we could do that, that, that work ourselves and not have to pay the state for those activities.
Thank you. Resolution, call a roll, please.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starlee?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Carries.
City Council reports. Anybody have anything? Announcements?
Council President, if I may, I would just like to say thank you to city administrator and to the council for recognizing the need for some additional staff in our office, and it is very much appreciated. Thank you.
Well, since you brought it up, I will note how quickly that got through. I mean, we're four years without a cable franchise agreement, but we got this extra person authorized quickly.
I would say that this was a long process. This was something that Lori and I have been talking about for almost a year, and, and how this was going to be presented, and